I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under heaven, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call them all.
Justine Mathis.
Here.
Justine Gifford.
Yes, here.
Justine Lockwood.
Here.
Justine Rizzo.
Here.
Mayor Castor.
Here. Just want to make one comment. So I'm a lefty and now I'm right-handed. So I'm typing everything or speaking into my phone, but on the rare occasion that I have to write something, I have to write it with my right hand. And it looks terrible, but it looks exactly like my daughter's handwriting. She's 19 years old. Because I'm being honest with you, I don't teach bended ship in school anymore. So if my daughter went through, I never realized that I should be teaching her how to teach bended ship. I think they should tell her parents that at some point. All right, we're going to move on to item number three, go to the floor. Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard and have privilege of the floor? Seeing none, I'll close privilege of the floor. And we'll move on to item number four, which is authorize me to sign the intermission municipal agreement with the town of Glenville relative to our summer recreation program. And this is where the town of Glenville gives us $1,000 toward the cost of running our summer rec program.
For what it's worth.
I'll second it.
Please call them all.
Justine Mathis.
Yes.
Justine Gifford.
Yes.
Justine Lockwood.
Yes.
Justine Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Castor.
Yes. Item number five is two new firefighters, Patrick Neilius and Ryan Creemo. I know Ryan from his high school days. I don't know Patrick, but...
I met Patrick. He's an ex-military, yes sir, type person. I would approve of him.
I'll second that. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. Item number six is authorize me to sign the lease agreement with Delgase Land for the copper for DPW. This is the copper that was budgeted in this year's budget and has just gotten around to specking up to the one he wants. So the money's already been put there in the budget and everything else.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion on that? Please call them all.
Justine Mathis.
Yes.
Justine Gifford.
Yes.
Justine Lockwood.
Yes.
Justine Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Castor.
Yes. Item number seven is authorize me to sign the fast solutions agreement to install a fast and all vending solution at DPW. So what this is, it looks like a large vending machine. It's... The contract is no cost to the village and there's no cost if we decide we don't like it and stop before the expiration date of the contract. But what it does is to make sure that we, first of all, that we buy pass and all stuff, which all of those items we buy on state contracts, so it doesn't really matter if we buy from. And the nice thing about it is the machine is loaded by pass and all. We pay for what we use out of it according to state contract, but it also is operated by a prob. So it's an inventory for us to know what employees are using, what fasteners, gloves, safety vests, ear protection.
And they're right there.
And they're right there. And the story that Andrew gave me was he walked around one day around a shop and picked up work gloves and he had eight pairs of work gloves that didn't belong to anybody because people just kept taking a new pair out. It's five bucks a pair. So this way, if somebody needs a new work glove, it'll clock out that so-and-so. So these are a little better handle on who's using what. So anybody care to authorize me to sign that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion. No money involved, so all favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next one is authorize me to sign the contract with McDonald Engineering for the preliminary engineering report and environmental review for the submission of the application for the revolving loan fund for the sewage treatment plant in an amount not to exceed $7,500. The $7,500, I just wanted to make a point, is covered, would be covered by the financing, the 0% financing for the plant, so it wouldn't be coming out of our budget.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion. Please call them all.
Justine Mathis.
No.
Justine Gifford.
Yes.
Justine Lockwood.
Yes.
Justine Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Castor.
Yes.
Item number nine, I don't know if I told you this or not, or Ken has gotten to anybody on this, but it looks like our new apparatus is going to be about two months early. So what is it, May or...? Well, originally it was May and now we're looking at February 24th as a delivery date. So we're moving right along with it.
That's exciting.
Yeah. I got a little nervous because, you know, we intended our original payment to be in the next fiscal year, but the money is there to make the payment and actually puts us in a better position in our financing as well. So we'll take delivery ASAP. Anything good is coming off 201. And then if we surplus it tonight, then we'll go with the company that Andrew uses to auction everything off.
Does Tom get to drive it the first time?
New one? You can drive the old one over to DPW. Could have to put a starter in it first though, it died last night.
What, really?
I think she knows she's on her way out. We got a blanket around her right now, we're nursing her. I tried to sell it to the chief of town's corners. So anybody care to...
I would surplus the old one.
I'll second that. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 10 is a resolution to surplus, a whole bunch of different things. I think you got them in email and just cleaning out things that haven't been used for the past few years and bringing out the newly renovated garage. So anybody care to surplus that list of equipment?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion on that one? All favor say aye. Item number 11 is a resolution to authorize the fire chiefs of campus for candidates for a new firefighter. The ones that were viable, I have taken the CPAT test and I checked with civil service on... Remember we talked about hiring them conditionally? And the condition being that our firefighter who's on 207 doesn't come back, so the guy would understand that he would be... Lose his job if that guy ever did come back. Talked to civil service and what she recommended is just hire them permanently and if that guy does come back, we do a layout. The difference between the two of them is the conditional is... It doesn't meet the... What we have does not meet the definition for a conditional appointment. The layout puts them on a preferred list and what that preferred list means is if we lay him off and then we have a vacancy within... Remember the number of years is it... Two or three years. Two or three years. If we have a vacancy within two or three years, we must ask him to come back first before we hire somebody else. So we intend to hire a good person. I think we're clean either way, but that's the technicalities of it. So would anybody care...
I'll make the motion with me. Interview.
I'll second.
Any discussion on it? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 12 is to adopt the Schenectady County Hazard Mitigation Plan. So you remember the nice job Jim Cologne did on that plan for us? They went to FEMA and I guess the... He must have done a great job because to everybody's surprise, it went right through and was accepted by FEMA with no amendments or modifications. So I guess that's not a typical thing to happen. So kudos to him and to Andrew. But at this point then, we and other bodies need to adopt it as D-Plan for Schenectady County. So anybody...
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion on that? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 13 is a resolution to amend the fee schedule relating to park use fees. So I told you guys that we have the written agreement with our regular users. We're going to forgive their fees for them maintaining the fields and all that kind of stuff. And there are only three of those regular users. What they did was kind of prompt Jim to think about what it costs us to maintain those fields for other users, softballers. And the fees that we charge are significantly less than what surrounding municipalities charge for their field use fees. So Jim recommended upping those fees, if for nothing else, to kind of the cost that it cost us to keep those up for the people that use them. So you've got the recommendation. I don't know if you want... Did you read your email? Because I didn't. Would you like to read what the...
You read the resolution.
Okay. So you got your resolution too. So would anybody care to move to amend the fee schedule for those? I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Since it involves money, we'll call them all.
Justine Mathis.
Yes.
Justine Gifford.
Yes.
Justine Lockwood.
Yes.
Justine Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Castor.
Yes.
Item 14 is my comments. My first comment is I think from now on, I'm going to do the agenda with my right hand because I haven't screwed anything up in the law. I should knock on wood, but it makes me go so long.
This is going to help your golf swing, I'm going to tell you right now. Having both hands, having similar strength.
Well, yeah. Well, it can't get much worse. It's got to get better maybe. Ann Lee, our historian, put together a report. Just kind of says this is what I've done at Glen House so far this year. Remember that last week I told you that I had... I want to put together a charge to historian and I intend to do that, bring that to you guys. But I just wanted to distribute her report to you so that you have an idea of the kind of activities that have gone on down at Glen House. If you're not really the kind of person that attends those things, she does put the mass emails out about them and that sort of thing. So I'd just like to be able to say that I... Since she did the work on it, that I put it in your hand and that the whole board has read it. So you can read that at your leisure. I was able to attend the bid meeting today. They're going to present their budget to us. So I don't... Some of you old guys maybe were talking quite a while ago what happened, but the bid each year in recent history has gone with a flat budget. They haven't asked for any increase in the budget, so it hasn't been necessary for them to address us. They're asking for an increase of a total of $350 in their budget for next year. The bid's budget is a component of our tax levy, so it is affected, affects our tax cap. So I told them that... And I explained to them that they have to present our budget and it has to be accepted by the board. It's been accepted as a matter of course for us because it's been flat for so many years. They're asking for an increase. So I told them that I thought that they would need to have somebody come here and explain why they needed the extra money in their budget. So Charlie Ford, somebody that's who's designated, is going to be at our next work session and will just give you guys a good idea to see what they're doing as a bid and what they're doing with the money in their budget. And I did explain to them that, I don't know which way it would go, $300 in a $5.5 million budget really would have a negligible effect, but the decision is that we don't support it. Their options are to cut the $300 out of the budget. Their option, or they are carrying a fund balance, so they can take money from their fund balance and support that extra $300 from the fund balance. But I think it'd be healthy for them to come and talk to you guys about what they do anyway. I had a proposal and I want to get back to Mike from the tap room. He comes up with a lot of ideas and things he'd like to do. One was a polar plunge where people jump in the lake. I told him that we get requests for that every year and we don't support those requests. Basically, Lydia can explain it better than me, but for the ice fishing and things that go on in the hazardous time on the lake in the wintertime, we don't promote ice fishing. We don't regulate ice fishing. We don't have rules for going on the ice. People cross public property and then go onto the lake of their own accord. They basically take the liability on themselves and we manage it that way. For us to have an event where we cut a hole in the ice and people jump in, suddenly we're taking a huge liability because now we've got a big hole in the ice while people are using it. So explain that to him and...
But the river's available.
Give these guys something to do.
Jumping jacks.
So his other idea is that he would like to have a beer tasting festival. So he wondered if...
Hey John, you can't leave.
He wondered if... What I thought of that idea, I've got nothing against it. I said I... The first idea he had was to cut the... Close South Tenbrook for that one block and go outside his restaurant. Said that's been tried before. Maybe it could work, maybe not. Said I thought that the village parking lot would be a great venue for something like that. And his idea was to have, you know, just small state tasting stations and then have the restaurants in town each have some specialty beer so you can go from restaurant to restaurant. So I said I would just want to remind you and see if anybody was against the idea and if not, you can come up with it and present us some...
I think you'd do it there. Oh, but there in the car show.
I want to hear what Pete has to say since he's here.
What? I'm distracted.
Are they talking again?
Beer tasting festival.
His ears perked up. So yeah, have you got any off the top of your head concerns over a beer tasting festival held in the village parking lot?
He just needs to make... Is he sponsoring it? Is he doing it?
It's a concept. It's not even a plan or an idea yet. It's just, what if we did something like that?
Yeah, I don't have an issue with it really. He just needs to make sure that SLA allows him to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
I just don't want to see him get jammed up.
Yeah.
But for a small beer tasting, I don't see it being...
And that's exactly what he said. He doesn't want to have, he doesn't want to have like a big block party thing. He wants a small beer tasting, but he wants it to kind of, you know, segue into going to the local restaurants and try this one here, this one there, or whatever. So I'll tell him there's no big...
Opposition.
Opposition to it, but he wants to put something together to present to all the powers that be.
More than that, we think it's a neat idea.
One of the priorities that was floated out, and we'll start addressing those in our work sessions, you know, as we get into the new year, but was to do a catalog of village properties. So Maria did the property...
From the tax roll.
From the tax roll. So she's got those identified on the tax roll, which is just a sheet of paper. So then I called over to Mark Storey, the county, and he did a map for us. I've got a map that shows all the village properties.
I did that too.
Did you really? Maybe yours is more... It doesn't really pop out at you. It's a good map, but it doesn't really pop out at you. But when you look at it, you can look at the map, but the properties that I know, the map doesn't prove justice. So I think you really, at some point, you know, when we combined the tax roll with the properties, we'd be good to just do a tour and see what all those properties look like.
Yeah.
And then I had a conversation with Rory Flumin, one of our county legislators. He lives on Wallace Street and there's a zombie property on Wallace Street. And he had some questions and I kept answering and he kept saying, well...
He lives on...
Oh, yeah. But the, well, Schenectady does this with her, why can't we do that? And I went back and forth explaining and I finally said, "Look, if you want somebody from Schenectady to come and tell us how they deal with their zombie properties, then fine, well, listen, you know, maybe I can learn something." So he's going to put that together. Lydia doesn't know and we have to ask her to be there. Maybe they do something we haven't thought of, I don't know. Worth listening to.
Well, they do a... Make a property charge of a thousand bucks the first year and 2,000 bucks the next year, which is pretty awful for a real estate person to swallow.
Well, and I tried to, yeah, and I tried to explain to them, you know, if you're going to do that, if you're going to pin money against the property. I don't know what city law says. You know, I know state village law. We don't really lean against the property. We can't take the property. You know, the county does all of that. So all we do is attach a charge to the taxes. So eventually the county gets stuck with those charges that we put against the property. So...
Because they make us hold for our unpaid taxes, so they're the ones responsible.
If we can pile up charges against the property, but it's a zombie property that the county's finally going to have to foreclose upon, then we've been paid for it more.
I don't even know if the county foreclosed any properties in the village. It's usually...
They have.
Oh, they have?
Yeah.
Usually the city has.
They foreclose our properties and the ones that we condemn when we... Typically, a condemned property, we'll condemn it. We'll tell the owner he's got to demolish it. When they don't, we go and do it and we send them a bill. They don't pay it, we attach it to taxes and the county makes us hold for it. Because in the end, the county will have to take the property and then auction it. So I'll listen what they have to say. I'll let you there too. Okay. Item 15 corresponds liaison and special committee reports, Justine Mathis.
Nothing to report.
Justine Gifford.
We had a fire department meeting. If there was anything special with planning board meeting. Had maybe the final approval for 25 Mohawk. And he was hoping it would be the final. We readjusted the look of the parking lot a little bit so it was more rectangular.
Can you tell me which houses are coming and which ones are going?
Okay, so Ann Alice's house is staying and the one toward here is going, which is going...
They already chopped apart.
That's going out of today.
Oh, they did it down today.
Oh, okay. So let's start from the Glen Addend. There's three houses. So there's one directly behind Dunkin' Donuts. That's going down as part of the Dunkin' Donut project, correct?
Right.
And the one next to it is...
That's the one that's staying.
That's staying.
Yeah.
And then the other side of the parking lot, that one's going.
That's gone.
So that one house is going to be there all by itself.
That's right. Okay. And then the other thing was that there was a guy here from Ohio, an engineer for CVS, talking about their preliminary plan. It met with a rather cool reception. They're talking about tearing down everything to the bowling alley and putting up a new building and having it look like, you know, a suburban mall. And the... So we sent the guy a copy of the master plan and that he read this and...
He... Oh, he said he read this, alright.
Yeah. So and it was very nicely handled, I thought. She did a gorgeous job of saying...
Good, well, I'm glad we have those design guidelines and all that. Let's be honest.
They're not looking to buy the bowling alley?
No.
Or... Okay.
But also take down the old one too.
Well, yeah, take down the old...
No plans for development of the old one, all right?
No, no, take it down and make parking lot. So it could be parking lot all the way from...
That's going to be a big CVS, isn't it?
Well, no, no, no. The CVS is just going to be where the Something Fishy and the liquor store are now.
Okay.
That's what they're talking about. And then, so they would tear those down, build a new one while they're keeping the old one open, then tear down the old one and have a parking lot.
Has it arrived?
So the parking lot did this huge space between the store and Gabriel's. You know, this was wide open, which doesn't go with our master plan at all. So it's... It got a very cool reception.
You got open?
At what? Is that it?
Yep.
Justine Lockwood.
Oh, should I talk about the solar thing?
I thought you would, yeah.
Okay. So, sorry. Andrew and I took a tour of the village properties and are looking at the possibility of putting solar installations. And then on Tuesday, we went to a seminar in Albany, Air Troy, with solar procurement for municipalities. It was very interesting. It was a little bit discouraging. It seemed that you don't have any choice but to make it formal and get a number of bids and... And the other thing, probably the most interesting thing was that you have to... There are tax credits. It's a 30% tax credit, which is why people are building so many solar things now. But the village isn't eligible for a tax credit. So the way they've been getting around that is to have a developer build the thing and lease it or whatever, rent it to the village, depending on how it works. And if they want to, they can pass on the savings, the sum of the 30% savings that they get. So basically, we need to figure out exactly what areas we want developed. If, you know, we probably ought to work on this in our next work session. You know, determine how many square feet of panels we want here and how many we want here. And then you have to go to a number of different vendors and say, "What do you offer us for this?" And you try to, you try to get the specs, you know, the same. And they have people, they have, and it sort of has a website and people to help you if you want. So that the bids are the same. It sounds like it takes three years.
You hear that?
Yeah. Yeah. So anyway. We're going, but not, you know, it's going to take a lot of work.
I was a little... And I just realized this after you guys talked about... I was hoping we could put like solar panels wherever we wanted and then we could just become self-sufficient on our, the solar energy. But you actually put, absorb the energy and then you put it back into the grid, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't...
It's kind of, I thought that was kind of weird, but then after I thought about it, it's like, yeah, of course, you know, the companies are all...
It's really better like that because it's so expensive to have batteries and go off the grid. So and we still have to... We still have to pump water at night.
All right, so I'll put it on the agenda for our work session.
Yep.
Justine Lockwood.
Well, I don't have anything from committees, anything other, you know, related to that, but I did want to make sure that you guys knew and put it, you know, on the record. I tried to reach out to just about all of you about my new job. Going to be working for the governor's office. And as part of the process, I had to get an ethics opinion about whether I could continue serving on the village board. Unfortunately, the ethics opinion that was provided does not allow me to continue working here if I continue, if I accepted the job with the governor's office. So I did accept the job with the governor's office. I start on the 22nd and I did submit my notice of resignation to Maria effective the 19th of this month. So as of the 19th, I will no longer be a village board member. So I just want to let everybody know and thank everybody for welcoming me. I think we're doing, as a board, as a whole, we're doing a very good job. I think we've got some great goals that we put on our initiatives and I think the mayor's got us pointed in the right direction and I hope you guys keep up the good work.
Thanks. I told John when he called me that I was just getting broken in, but...
And that's how I felt. Literally, that's how I felt because, you know, I've developed a relationship with the heads of the departments and with some of the employees. It's kind of, it's bad timing for me because I was really kind of gaining some momentum. And I think I really wanted to be around... I mean, I'm still going to be around. I'm going to be part of... You might see me in the seats at some point, but I think I wanted to be around when Waste of Our Treatment Plan was built. Unfortunately, it's just going to be after when the engine's delivered and I'll, if you guys let me know, you know, when you're working cutting or whatever, I'll come climb all over that thing because...
Probably serve as volunteer farming or something like that.
I don't think the governor would buy that.
Yeah, I just want to say how serious this, seriousness. You know how hard it is to get volunteers in this village, you know, to participate in anything? And we all know how hard it is to get candidates to run for an office. And then once you're here, as an elected official, you find out fairly quickly that the highs and the fun parts are few and far between and the job itself is a lot of hard decisions and a lot of compromises. And with the tax cap and the finances of the village, it's just, you know, it's a little bit of a grueling job and it's a lot of responsibility that people expect you to do the right thing all the time and, but you can't make everybody happy. And you're, the people who are up front here, they're going to be a good hand man. So, you know, I appreciate the time that you've put in.
It's been quite dedication, for sure. Absolutely dedication.
I appreciate the time you put in and, you know, I want to make sure that you take your placard and at least as a memory of what you, your service to the village.
I don't know if the governor's going to allow me to carry that around.
You don't have to put it, you can carry it around. I still have mine from when I was trustee. I'm taking mine from Mayor.
Andrew's got one on his desk. Andrew's got one on his desk.
There are a lot of people that do this, and it's something to be proud of, so.
I am proud, thank you.
Thank you.
Give the ear for local government, um, while you're there?
That's, well, depends, I, my, my boss is gonna be the governor, so it's gonna be, you know, and that's kind of why I have to resign, because the position could conflict because of, I mean, we're, we're members of Nikon and you know, they're, they kind of clashed with the administration, so. I'm definitely not gonna forget what I've learned here, you know, take it with me, but it doesn't necessarily mean I'm gonna be, got the pom poms on.
There's not a lot of people that do this job, but I have to tell you that as mayor, I think I'm increasing the crowd because this is the fourth trustee that's left me in the middle of the town, so.
He, he is, of course, a lawyer, so he could wear the other hat just as fast as the, you know.
Trustee Rizzo, no report this month. Okay. Item sixteen, departmental reports, anybody care to move to accept the departmental?
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Any discussion? I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item eighteen, approval of the minutes on the January thirteenth regular meeting.
Oh, you got the seventeen.
Oh, I forgot, that was important, what? I, I knew I should go back on what I said that. Item seventeen, honor claims.
I'd like to make a motion, and I'll say.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Trustee Mathis?
Yes.
Trustee Gifford?
Yes.
Trustee Lockwood?
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Katsberg?
Yes. Item eighteen is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the board trustees on January thirteenth. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nineteen, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of the trustees on February second. I'll make the motion.
Actually, there were some things that could be added to that.
Sure.
Under the Waste Water Treatment Plant, I didn't see any of the questions that I asked Jack. I asked him.
I didn't do anything intentional.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying you did, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that, the questions I asked that, um, Jack.
I don't think I put everyone's question.
By the sub trustee, um.
I put trustee's, Rizzo's question in there because I thought it was, I thought it was a good, I thought it then led to the timeline of the project, which is the only reason why I added that only one, so.
Can, if we could update that, I'm sure you have any notes.
So it could remind me because we don't have it recorded.
Okay. It was in regards to what other projects the flood could be used for?
And I believe the answer was that we would need to present a new application, right, Chris?
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
So I move those minutes being approved as amended. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? I'll favor say aye. Aye?
I can't, I wasn't there.
Any opposed?
I'm not opposed.
Any intentions? Uh, new business, anybody have any new business for this evening?
I just went down and checked the new plow truck out and took a look around DPW, I think Angie's crew's doing a real good job bringing that building right back to life. It really looks nice in there, it's bright. Uh, he's done a lot of improvements to heaters and roof, everything looks really good, I gotta commend your crew for a good job. And that's about all I have to say, did a good job, guys did good work.
I'd also like to bring up Waste Water Treatment Plant again, I really like the board to consider their vote at the work session to change that due to the fact, even further investigation afterwards, I don't feel confident that the plan that's been given to us is accurate in the, in the sense of the land, the price of the land that we're actually looking to purchase. I think there's a lot of speculation in regards to some clients or customers we're gonna get from this, it's not written in there in regards to the town and some of the stuff over at the corporate industrial park. And quite truthfully, being the second highest taxed municipality in the area, I don't think it's in our best interest to move forward with any project at this time that builds on the current infrastructure without taking a look at the infrastructure we currently have and trying to improve on that where there is gaps. So I would really ask the board to reconsider their vote and going forward with the treatment plant.
I guess, what, what do you mean by the, you brought the town up as, as a customer?
I've heard numerous times that, that people believe that the town is gonna be a client or a customer of ours. I don't necessarily know if that's gonna be accurate, I'm just using them as one example. Um, also too, I'm concerned about the truck washing station and the traffic where it's currently gonna be located or planned to be located and the trucks and the traffic going down that road, and how it's gonna have an impact on the community. So I don't know if there's another, I didn't see it, and maybe I overlooked it, but is there another place to put that?
Does the town have another option?
I don't know, I'm just, we're dealing with speculation.
No, no, see, I mean, I, I think the whole point of this, though, Kevin, is that what we're looking at, the way it was presented to us, and I think we have to believe our, you know, contracted employer that, that even without, without the truck washing, without any, any sewage from Glenville, just talking about the amount of money we pay Schenectady, which we have to do, I mean, everybody out there wants to know when they flush the toilet, it's gonna go away. And so we have to pay somebody for that. We pay Schenectady an exorbitant amount with this deal where we don't have to pay anything for the money to borrow the money. It saves us money in the first year, we're talking about saving money and not doing any, without any of the expansion.
Two things, it's still gonna cost money, just because money's free doesn't mean it's not gonna cost something, it's not like we're getting free money.
No, no, but, but it's money when we get there, we won't have to pay this money to the city Schenectady, do we have?
In this day and age, with everything coming to the point where we're looking to share services, we're going in the opposite direction where we're looking to do things on our own, and I just don't think it's the right time to do that. Especially considering the taxes that we have to pay residents. We should be looking at sharing services and not going on, on road essentially, on our own.
That's neat, but if it's cheaper to do it on our own and it saves everybody money, why not do it?
I don't see it being cheap, it's, I don't see it being cheaper.
Well, that's.
Just because it costs.
Do you just materially disagree with the, the numbers that we provide?
I agree with a lot of them, like, first of all, how do we know we're gonna get the land that's in question? The land that is proposed, has there been any conversations with the person that owns that land, are we guaranteed to get that land for a hundred thousand dollars?
Well, if we can't, if we can't get the land, then we're not gonna be able to, we're gonna have to change where this.
I just think, and, and also too, the numbers and the speculation that's driven by that, that report, after looking at it time and time again, I just don't think it's accurate, I don't think it's the right time to do it, and I don't think it's the right time for us to take on a project where we are, you know, we're the second highest taxed municipality, it's not the first time I've said this to you guys, and I know you guys, I don't wanna speak for you, but I don't think you disagree with me on that. I don't think you can. And I don't think we should be looking at building a project of that magnitude right now in the taxpayer. If you take a look at the other things that have come from votes recently in this community, in neighboring communities, they do not want that type of additional tax burden on them, and we're already sitting there, and we're already at the highest, second highest taxed municipality in the area, and I don't think we should keep adding to that.
This was super clear, the sewer treatment plant will be totally in the G fund, which is, has no reflection in the A fund or the tax ring.
It's, it's, it's still cost, it still costs something, and who's paying for the waterfront, the water funds, where's the funds come from that?
You pay as a fee, you are.
Exactly, so who's paying the fee?
But the first, the first year that plan is built.
Who's paying the fee?
That total cost will be a hundred and four thousand dollars less than it is today.
Who's paying the fee out of those funds?
Of the users.
The users are who, the residents?
The residents.
And again, you're adding another fee on top of the residents who are the second highest taxed.
But you're reducing that fee, I think.
You're gonna finish, you're gonna tell.
This project reduces that fee by a hundred and four thousand dollars the first year that plan's open.
And in ten, twenty years down the road, when you have this infrastructure breaking down, and you have this infrastructure, and you have employees and all the benefits associated with that, we've had numerous discussions, not only with, with other employees and the cost and the retirement plans and everything else, twenty years down the road, I don't wanna put the burdens of, of that on somebody else when I have the control to do so.
But the burden will eventually be on the taxpayers because it's actually gonna happen, it would happen sooner if we don't act because the city's infrastructure is actually in a situation where they're probably gonna have to act sooner to fix their infrastructure, which then they pass that cost on to us, which we don't have any control over right now.
But we should be looking to pair up with, especially in this, this, this current economic state we're in. It's, the shared services are becoming more important, we shouldn't be looking to do something on our own going rogue, we should be looking.
But did you, but you were here, you were present for the conversations.
We've been talking about Glenville for several years.
I didn't say the town of Glenville, I, I said the town of Glenville, we shouldn't speculate they're gonna be a customer of ours. I'm not saying the town of Glenville, we're bringing up Schenectady, why aren't we talking to Schenectady about that? Last time I heard, we decided, um, when Schenectady got brought up, we decided not to pay our bill because of the dispute associated with that.
Talk to them about it a lot.
There's sewer treatment plant.
They've spent five years doing that, that's how we got our contract.
Right, exactly, that's, that's the discussion I remember with Schenectady.
You're saying build a joint plant.
That I've never heard once of anything that he's done with Schenectady. I've always heard Glenville, I'm not saying that's an option, I'm just saying, right now, the predicament, the warning, we should not be looking to build, we should be looking to sharing services with other municipalities. And I don't think we did that, you mentioned the town, and I can't speak for the town?
Geographically speaking, the town would be our only partner, so, you know, to get to those.
The town's our only partner, why are we using Schenectady?
To get to those of Scotia, you either come across the river from Schenectady or through the town, one or the other, so those would be.
So we're currently partnered with Schenectady, too?
We're a customer of Schenectady, we're not a partner with Schenectady.
So there could be potential for us to look into partnering with Schenectady.
But that's a lot more expensive.
The, the terms of our, our relationship with Schenectady are what are driving us to build our own sewer treatment plant.
I think.
We've already been there.
I, I think us wanting to do it on our own was driving us to build the sewer treatment plant. We just wanted to do it on our own, you know, numerous times I've heard, I've heard we have two square miles we can't build out, and I wanted to talk about increasing businesses, but miraculous, we have some land that we can purchase to sit there and build out, to fill the treatment plant.
In the flood plain, you can't build, you can't develop it.
How are we doing it then?
We're filling it.
We're filling?
Mm-hmm.
And how are we gonna have access to it when there's only one street, so we're, we're gonna be coming at what street?
Well, we're talking either going in at the point of Shawnee, Washington, but there's a second option of coming in on the, so you go across Collins Creek.
And land that we own.
Yeah, well, land that we'll purchase.
From who?
Rikowski.
Rikowski for the hundred thousand dollar? Okay, and we've had that conversation, I've never once had that conversation.
We're contracted, ready to buy, we're only authorized to move forward with this project.
So where do we get that number of a hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, from the estate of the property.
Okay, so we never had a conversation about what the property is actually gonna cost. So we don't even know, and again, that, it reconfirms my point, a lot of this is speculation.
Well, it has to be that, yeah.
Right, we don't have, we have no contracts to build anything right now, we don't have contracts to, I mean, and that's why we have an option, we're gonna have an option to purchase.
We're assuming a lot of things in this, and that is one speculation, and a speculation about the town, and the thing is, is that.
Right, but you're talking, moving them.
But assumption subject to, uh, fa- facts, like, you, you, you assume something, but if something, and that's why we have conditions on the, on, on our contracts.
I really think we should start looking at doing things with shared services as opposed to sitting there paying tax.
But you were.
You've, you've done a couple of things.
We did have a conversation where we.
I was in the, I was in the room with, with you, I talked to the town, I had talked to the town, but also too, I found it difficult to get to the town and come to their meetings because their meetings conflict with the same likes as ours.
Well, that shouldn't prevent you or anybody on the board from talking to them about it.
I can't clone myself and go to their meetings.
No, 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 I mean, if, if picking up a phone and calling now, I'm like, you know.
Yeah, but why, you know, I should be, as a resident, I should also be able to go to both meetings, so even think, aside from that, I should be able to go to both meetings even if I wasn't on the.
Right, right, like, I'm, I'm guessing, we're getting off.
And I can't go to those meetings to even sit there and hear that sigh, because our meetings conflict.
Right, but conflicting meetings, aside, yeah.
Well, how am I supposed to be, I, I'm the liaison for the town, supposed to work with the town, and I can't even get to the meetings to go see the town?
You ask the town to change their mind, yes.
I could ask us to change our mind, too, it doesn't, that's gonna happen.
You could, you could, but I'm just, but I guess we're kind of going to.
My, my point is that the communication with the town, I have never once heard the town come in here. I actually am the liaison to the DPW, and I wasn't even involved in any of the conversation with the sewer treatment plant. I wasn't chosen by the mayor to do that, similar to the fact I wasn't chosen to go around with Andrew and do the solar panels, for whatever reason. And I am supposed to be the liaison to the DPW. So I'm just saying, guys, I really think that all our facts aren't there, I really think that as a representative for the village, uh, residents of the village, someone needs to stand up and sit there and say, you know what, we're going down the wrong path. Because I go back to when I first joined this, this board, and the mayor was kind enough to have me come to a meeting, and when I found out later how much we paid for the engineering study, I just think we're going down the wrong road. I think we should stop, put the brakes on, focus on other things, the infrastructure, and that's why I was asking the other week about some of the infrastructure that we currently have and working on that to build on top of that down the road. But right now, we do not have the funds or means to start adding additional costs, building additional buildings, and it's in the, in my opinion, the spot is gonna be terrible. Honestly, I can picture, you know, if we had that washing station, if, and again, I guess we can deal with speculation because that's all we're doing, if trucks are coming down past the park where Little League is, what kind of traffic is that? That are gonna be washed? You're gonna have trucks coming down there, going past jumping jacks on a summer night? That's what we really want?
I don't think they're gonna be coming, they're gonna be doing their, their stuff during the day, not at night where the, when the parks are busy and things like that.
Evening? OD, OD down here goes twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, there's no guarantee.
Let me go, let me go back to your situation where you says, we, we don't work with other communities, we work with Schenectady, it takes our trash, we work with the county, we work with Glen, Glenville, we work with everybody.
Joe, you're misunderstanding me, I'm not saying we don't work, I'm saying we should look to work with more people on this, this topic. I'm not saying we don't.
We start working with the town on different things like this, they put the brakes on just as fast as anybody else has.
Well, I think we should put the brakes on this project, though.
We've communicated with the town on a number of projects that we wanted to do, and the town didn't wanna be bothered.
But you're always saying the town.
They're our partner over here, they should be working with us to try to get things done, but they don't wanna hear none.
Don't you think Schenectady's gonna say the same thing about us?
Schenectady's got their own problems.
I told the mayor.
We got, we got, we got, uh, Rodney's got their own sewer treatment plant they're making money on, Colony has their own sewer treatment plant, and all these municipalities got all this stuff. They're not paying, the, the, they're, first, they're.
And Colony's taxes aren't as high as ours.
We've got something going for us that they don't, we've got development.
Higher taxes.
We've got something that's development corporation park that's gonna be developing in the next five to ten years, and we're gonna have all those people as customers.
What if it doesn't?
Not including our fire department.
What if it doesn't?
It's gonna happen, it's already started.
The numbers that we use are the numbers.
What if they don't become our client and they find another means?
They can't, because all their stuff has to come this way.
Because that's Schenectady, so why can't we partner up with Schenectady?
We're gonna disagree, I spent a lot, a lot of time going nowhere, so if you would like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we revisit and have another vote in regards to, um, put the brakes on the, the treatment plant.
I'll give her a second there. Once.
How's where you're gonna put that in, in the note, put the brakes on, does that mean table for, or?
Override the existing vote, stop the vote.
That progress on wastewater, is that appropriate word?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what.
Is that progress on wastewater sewer treatment plant?
So, calling for a second, the second time. Calling for a second, third time. Motion dies to lack of a second. Any other new business? So I mentioned the records retention grant, voting for authorization to enter into the records retention grant with Sycor and Murphy, an amount not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars for, for the second step of that process.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Trustee Mathis?
Yes.
Trustee Gifford?
Yes.
Trustee Lockwood?
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Katsberg?
Yes, and I got the stop sign law, so it's for local law number two thousand sixteen A, it's our first law of two thousand sixteen to regulate the intersections that are listed on that law, not gonna be a law.
I'll make the motion, I'll second it.
Any discussion on that one? I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Discussion on the tax cap. So our tax cap for this year is point one three. Essentially with the, the credits that we get.
One two.
One, one two. Essentially with the credits we get.
Hey, this is neat, we're gonna be able to blame John pretty soon.
The dollar, the dollar amount is we can raise our levy by twenty-seven thousand dollars for next year. I fully intend to attempt to build a budget that does that. But you never know, so I'm gonna do the same thing that I have done every budget year is ask if the board would be willing to enact. ask if the board would be willing to enact or introduce a local law to allow us to exceed the tax cap. The way that works is we would introduce a local law, adopt it at our next meeting. But if we have a budget that makes the tax cap, then we would repeal that local law and our residents would be eligible for their rebate. But it leaves us open to doing whatever is necessary.
Well, it keeps us from being penalized if we don't, right? That's the one thing. I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Great. So we're voting now to?
See, in order to have it in place, we have to start the law.
Oh, oh, and then public hearing.
We have to introduce it now to public hearing. The adoption would be, the public hearing adoption would be next month and then it would be in place. Then if we get a budget that makes the tax cap, then we repeal it.
So we're allowing ourselves to put the law to exceed the tax gap.
Well, then there's a public hearing next meeting for the public to come.
Just like the county does. We'll do the same thing. Any other discussion?
But I don't remember repealing it before. We just did it.
That's for the freeze. In order for the residents to receive that check, then you need to repeal it.
We never had to repeal it before.
Is there a deadline for the repeal? Oh, no. That's, I think just prior to the adoption. So we would repeal it and then adopt our budget. But I can confirm that.
Any other discussion? Please call a roll.
Justy Mathis?
No.
Justy Gifford?
Yes.
Justy Lachter?
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Patzfer?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Tom, your vote?
Yes.
Just so you guys know, we told me not to bother because she's gonna make the tax cap this year, but.
Ooh, I like the confidence. You have a prize for that.
Okay. As I, I guess I'll do this one first. So with John's resignation, that leaves a vacancy on the board. A vacancy in an unfilled term is mine, and mine alone to fill. So I think I've talked to everybody here. So I'm going to just let you know that I'll be hereby appointing Greg Zeeman to effective February 19th to fill the remaining term of John Matthews. Greg is here tonight because his daughter's got a art show, so I told you you're gonna have to. And.
How much is it?
Two nineteen. That's when your resignation takes place. Assuming Tom Neil's didn't want it because I talked to him last night and he didn't say anything about it. And then finally, I told you last week that I was hoping that I would be asking you for a ratification of the PVA contract and it's true, I am. So the PVA ratified agreement at their meeting on Monday, I'm gonna ask you for a ratification tonight. And in order to get us to that point and hopefully answering questions that you might have, I've got some little points on what that agreement entails. So, you know, the big thing in every contract is always pay. So top column, what the PVA gets, they get an increment in their salary of one and a half percent from now going forward. Their retro pay, which would be fourteen, fifteen and fifteen, sixteen at two percent. They've already been paid that pay, so it's just another quarter of a percent on top of what they were already paid for the retro pay. And this contract extends to 2019, May 31st of 2019. And I will say that our attorney thought one and a half percent that far out was pretty good.
Just, can you explain the retro to the board?
So they've already been paid for, the contract expired in 2014. So they've already been paid for 2014 and 15 at, to stay aware of what they got. In 2015 and 2016 at the rate that they got. So going retroactively, I think their increment was one point seven five or whatever it was. So it's a differential between what they were paid and what two percent would be. I can't tell you what that is in dollars. They also got a rotating schedule. The way the schedule was now that if you went into your schedule, you had the same day off, could be for your entire career. This way it'll be three, four on, two off, three on, five off, whatever their schedule is. So they can actually plan for a weekend. The benefits of the village, it's a benefit to them because they'll be able to plan for having a weekend off at some point in time. The benefit to the village is that when we had it the old way, people were stuck working on the weekends. We had a high rate of people calling in sick and whatever when they needed a weekend off. So hoping that we get a little give back for that. Ten dollar increase in longevity going forward. What looks high is the four twenty-five in the clothing allowance, but in give back for that, you'll see under the village. We used to buy their uniforms for them every year, pants and shirts every year. We no longer will do that, we'll have to buy them themselves. So we just gave them the money out of the contract that we used to buy their clothes. And now they're responsible for buying their own clothes. And then I think I have already told you about the insurance. That was a weird thing, the ninety, ten deductible. So we're hoping that we don't see a big impact on us financially for that because most of our employees never got to the eighty percent, much less the ninety percent. And then.
Question, did the clothes allowance go down?
No.
Okay, good.
We, we took the money that we were using to buy uniforms for them in our, that's budgeted, in the police budget. Instead of budgeting in the police budget now, they just get it in a check.
It's just, it's all went up for them. That's good. Cause when we paid the bills, I thought it was higher than that. It, yeah?
So, yeah, went after them and it's out, it's up from us.
Okay, cause I thought it was like five hundred and something dollars just recently when we were going with this bill form. Maybe I'm getting the mixed up.
Maybe because you had two employees still in the police office.
Yeah, we'll still buy the initial uniform.
Okay, that, that could be in. I just wanna make sure, you know, it's reasonable for them. I just thought it looked like it went down.
It wouldn't be there if it did.
This, and I, it's complex. I know you guys know some of it, but this negotiation got very complicated because we were negotiating a contract, but then on the side, we had disagreements for the healthcare. So we had to meld the healthcare grievance into the negotiations for the contract. So this contract settles that grievance and the union now accepts our health plan and the new one that will be coming this June, because we're gonna have to change to a new plan this June. So that made the, it was complex. It was, gave me a headache. But anyway, the health grievance has been solved with this. We won't be going to arbitration for that. They've accepted our healthcare language and the new plan that will be put in place this June. Their comp time, it used to be a case where an officer could bank their overtime with us for fifteen years if they wanted to and order, let's say a hundred dollars a day. And when they cash it out, cash it out at whatever the value of the day was fifteen years later. Now they won't be able to do that. They have to cash out their comp time at the end of every year. So it'd be easier for Pete to manage his budget for his overtime and you won't be carrying that money all the time. And they won't be able to use us as a savings account at a high interest rate. We no longer supply their uniforms annually. And then within the new schedule, Pete built in a multitude of safeguards to make sure that he controlled any overtime, any time off and how he manages when people take their time, so. So those are the highs and lows of the proposal that we're, we're bringing to you. And we're entertaining a motion to ratify.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Effective tomorrow, I'd say it tomorrow. So motion is second. Any other discussion? Please call a roll.
Justy Mathis?
Yes.
Justy Gifford?
Yes.
Justy Lachter?
Yes.
Justy Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Patzfer?
Yes. And I was wrong. We aren't nine years into it. We're six years into it. An expired contract. And you know what? And I'm gonna give the PVA a lot of credit for going this long. It took three PVA presidents to get this contract. You never heard a complaint in public. You never heard anything to the paper. It was all done gorgefully and we all worked together. At the end of the day, I think Gordy and I were pretty much exhausted because, you know, we were at the table doing the business. And John was there too. A couple of times John didn't make the meeting, but a lot of times it was, you know, we'd come back and Gordy and I would have to hammer out, because it's unbelievable how one person says is different than another person hears. So we soon discovered that we had to kind of reconvene afterward to make sure that what we both heard was what was actually gonna go on. And then you take it back to your people. And I tried to keep you guys informed what went on. Gordy did the same thing and it made it a lot smoother going that way, so. Anything else before your turn?
And one thing, a librarian friend of mine has been complaining for quite a long time about the lights along the sidewalk next to the library. And Jimmy's been working on it hard and they finally are working this week.
Oh, really?
Except for the one that fell down, but I don't know what happened to that.
Just have to kick it? Give it a good kick.
Can I say something about that? Jack Collins approached me. I guess they have a light that they'd like us to take to replace the one.
Remember I called you about that one? Mr. P. wanted it?
I told him we'd do it this spring.
I just have to, you're getting it from, he's got it somewhere.
Yeah, they wanna get out of the light business, so. Alright, any other motion? Go to your turn.